If you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Bass.
President.
Ingalls.
King.
Here.
Mayor Philkins.
Here.
And if we could get a motion to approve the agenda this evening as it's been presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. That would be greatly appreciated and also if you would keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Troy Baxter and I reside here in Cadillac and I noticed on the agenda, the proposal to continue, proposal to rezone Cooley School. And as I've stated before, the neighborhood is strongly opposed to that rezoning and the position of the council has been for the greater good of the community. I want to thank Councilman King and City Manager Marcus for defending the zoning for R1 zoning as people that buy or live in an area that is zoned R1 or R2 expect certain things to continue to be that way. And on 417, they came to the defense of that stance as it pertains to zoning. Just for the record, again, I'll state, and I know that you already have this document, was presented by Lyndon Bill, her husband's deceased, but this has been a little over a year ago, a neighborhood poll. Several of these neighbors have written letters and come to the meetings, but it's been a long, arduous process of finally getting to where we are now, which is probably this meeting and one more before zoning is actually changed. But on this neighborhood poll, says I strongly oppose any zoning change allowing apartments at Cooley School campus. And the signature of Dee Jacobson, 214 Granite, Lyndon Allen Bill, Allen's deceased now, 207 Granite, Raven Cubitt, 204 Granite, Allison Philip Painter, 218 Granite, Alyssa Ward, 250 Granite, Jared Hauser, 256 Granite, Mr. Thomas, 233 Granite, Trevor Oliver, 336 Granite, can't make out this signature, but it's 255 Granite, Edith Birdwell, 1225 Laurel Street, her husband Jim Birdwell, Steve Birdwell, same address, and Aaron Camper, 223 Marble, Amanda Ronzi, 211 Marble Street, Kenneth Cripps, 207 Marble, Ken Klaus, 124 Marble, Louise Welch, 124 Marble, they're married now.
Okay, Mr. Baxter, you have three minutes, sir.
Three minutes, okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Van Allstof, 2005 Sunnyside Drive. I got some good news. I am really super happy with the roads. I mean, I've been going down these roads. I'm like, wait, there's a road here. How'd that, the smooth pavement is just unbelievable. So whoever did that, good job. Then of course, you know, I'm all worked up about the short-term rentals and I've seen some improvement there too, or it looks like, it looks like something happened. I haven't had people next to me here for a couple of weeks, which is a little bit scary. You know, I go, well, so is it just like the lull before the storm or what's going on? And then I see that one of the houses down the road that was an Airbnb is maybe sold. So I'm going, was that because they're going to put an Airbnb there, maybe the zoning's going to change there or something? So I'm a little concerned about, I'm skeptical, right? So the article that said something about sporadic zoning, that bothers me. So I think that, I feel good, but apprehensive. So I know a lot of people are concerned. So, you know, thanks for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dean D. Krieger with the DK Design Group, 1104 South Mitchell. I also represent DKD Development. I just want to thank you for the efforts you're taking to work through the Oprah that we are talking about, the obsolete property. Obviously, we are talking about Cooley School. We're following the plan that the community came up with through various, several community meetings to present that as a rehabilitated site. We look forward to the opportunity to try and make that a very viable project where we can bring in people that are working in our community, that are supporting our community so we can clean that site up, we can get rid of vandalism, we can get rid of the mess that's there and make it a viable property. I like the idea of it being residential primarily because it keeps the traffic flow much lower than saying assembly use like a church or a school would be. So much better for the community. Our intent is through this project to assist all the neighbors by improving their taxable value. So thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. In this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on May 1st, 2023, and also the minutes from the closed session from May 1st. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Sorry. Ellen Bass.
Yep.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
And then next on our agenda is some communications.
Yes, we have a request for a banner for the Call to All Family Festival to be hung between August 7th through the 14th, and then also a requested street closure, Lake Street, between Harris and Cass from August 11th to the 13th.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from August 7th to 14th, 2023. The requested Lake Street closure between Harris and Cass Street from August 11th to 13, 2023.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
And then the second thing we have is a request to parking lot closure for testing for tacos. It's going to be on June 27th between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m.
I'd make a motion to approve the requested parking lot closure from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on June 27th, 2023.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. And we have one appointment this evening?
Yes, we have Jennifer Smeltzer to the Cadillac-Wexford Airport Authority Board for a two-year term. She's interested in serving on that board and that will expire on June 5th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer Smeltzer to the Cadillac-Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on June 5th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
And that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item this evening is a very special one. We have with us tonight our Director of Public Safety, Adam Ojepka, who is going to introduce both the officer and the pup that is completing their service, Sage. And Adam, why don't you read the plaque and bring them in?
Mayor, council members, I wanted to, tonight's kind of bittersweet. We're retiring after 10 years Sage, our canine. And come on in. And Sage has given us 10 good years of service to the citizens of Cadillac and Sergeant Taylor has given us 15 years in the canine handling for the city.
And what kind of dog is Sage?
He's a Belgian Malinois.
I remember when he came to us. I do too.
Yep. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago.
No.
So Sergeant Taylor, I'd like to present you with this award on behalf of me and citizens of Cadillac, mayor, council members, certificate of appreciation for your extraordinary service and dedication as Cadillac Police Department canine handler for 15 years. We appreciate your service. And then we're going to go ahead and bring in and introduce the new canine.
Great. Yay. He's got treats in his pocket.
Treats for the new one.
Yeah. So the new one is a puppy.
Oh, that's right.
It is a purebred German Shepherd. And we'll be here in just a minute.
And what's the new one's name?
Attila.
Attila?
I'm disconcerting about Attila.
Attila, like the hunt.
I called my youngest daughter Attila the little sister for years.
Sort of a fun fact, we don't name the dogs. They're named by the organization that we get them from because there's already a certain level of training.
Before they come.
Before they come, yeah.
Mayor, council members. Officer Zach Hicks, he's been with the department for six years now. And here's our new canine for the city of Cadillac. I'd like you to introduce you to Attila.
Woo, Attila, ready to go.
She's just a pup. How old is she?
She'll be three in August.
She'll be three in August.
She's a beauty.
So Officer Hicks went away for about a month to training with the canine so that they could acclimate to each other. We think he still has all his fingers, so that's a good.
And we'll see you in 10 years.
Is the family excited?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's a horse sage.
Yeah, yeah, right. I smell Sage.
The panting.
All right, Mayor, members of the city council, I appreciate you giving us that opportunity tonight to do the introduction to the community as well as saying, you know, goodbye to Sage and wishing the puppy well in its retirement. First order of business under the manager's report that requires some action is a request to strike 2018 delinquent personal property taxes. If you look within the agenda packets, there's a total of 22 parcels that are still on the 2018 delinquent personal property tax roll. Again, keyword is personal property tax roll. The total amount of money that we're looking at striking off the roll is $249.87, which equals about $11.36 per parcel. The cost of continuing to try to pursue collection on this would far outweigh what we would actually collect and therefore the recommendation this evening is to simply strike it.
Okay, would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize Foster, Swift, Collins &amp; Smith, PC to prepare on the city's behalf, petition with the circuit court to strike 2018 delinquent personal property.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next, of the next four items, they're all related in the same vein that we're setting a public hearing or asking to set a public hearing. Three of the four are all related to the Cooley School property itself. The first two items are regarding the creation of an obsolete property rehabilitation district. That district would be the property itself where the Cooley School development currently sits. The second item, starting a parallel track, is in regard to then setting a public hearing for the obsolete property rehabilitation application for that property. So in order for that property to be eligible to go through that abatement program, you would first have to have the district in place. Again, we're working it concurrently. This isn't something new. We did the same thing back when Cadillac Lofts was first constructed. And so the request this evening, taking those obviously one by one, the first one would be setting the public hearing to establish the district for June 19th, 2023. We have already gotten a letter from the assessor declaring that property to be obsolete.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution 2023-3501 regarding obsolete property rehabilitation district establishment for the Cooley School redevelopment and set a public hearing for June 19th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. This very next item is again regarding the setting of a public hearing for the consideration of the application for an obsolete property rehabilitation, for that same set property.
Okay, I'll make that motion to adopt the resolution 2023-3502 regarding obsolete property rehabilitation act application for the Cooley School redevelopment and set a public hearing for June 19th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item is a request to schedule a public hearing for June 19th for the sale of a portion of property located at 326 Hayne Street. Just as a quick refresher, this has been something before the city council now on several occasions over a number of years. This is essentially a triangle-shaped parcel of property located off of Hayne Street bordered by the Clam River to the west and Inland Lakes machinery to the east. Inland Lakes is at a point now where they're prepared to move forward and expand their business. They're bringing in additional machinery. They need additional space to make that happen to keep them sustainable here in Cadillac. That additional space will allow for an outgrowth of their current footprint in terms of the building as well as an outgrowth of the parking area. In exchange for the property, they are looking at donating $10,000 to the city. At your next meeting, when you're actually considering that, the, what do you call it? The transfer of the property, you'll also then be considering that agreement regarding the exchange and the donation as well. But again, all that you're being asked for to do this evening is to set the public hearing. The last thing I wanted to mention is that on the far western parcel that would be remaining of this property is where we are looking at putting in the micro park using a portion of the Consumers Energy grant that we have received to help us do that.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution 2023-3503 authorizing sale of real property, portion of 326 Hayne Street, and set up public hearing for June 19th, 2023.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
King. Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item on the agenda here is to set another public hearing and apologize how these have all come together at once, but we really didn't have any choice in the matter for June 19th, 2023. And this is regarding a hearing to consider the rezoning for the Cooley School property. The rezoning of the property would allow for a multifamily type project or development to take place there.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution 2023-3505 to amend city zoning map, Cooley School property, and set a public hearing for June 19th, 2023.
Councilmember Ingalls.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, this evening we do have in our board packets the minutes from the last planning commission meeting to review, and that takes us to our second public comment for this evening.
I'll follow, reading the rest of the names. Just a couple of comments here, and I know everybody's making the decisions based on their feeling for what is the greater good for the community. And as we walk through that and endeavor to stay on track for that focus, just wanted to say that the zoning that we're moving forward in, in most cases, would be considered spot zoning. In definition from a legal standpoint, the spot zoning is defined as a process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification totally different from that of the surround area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners. Spot zoning is very antithesis of planned zoning. So somehow, we've been able to get our arms around what we want to take place at Cooley School and not address this definition. And as we move forward and perhaps the applicants will get a grant to follow through with what they're wanting to do, grants are, a lot of times, even 90% of your ducks in a row is a wish and a prayer. So the question I would propose to the council is what happens next? We've already gone through this process a couple of times and the last meeting that we were at, there was a lot of comments about the condition of Cooley School. And that, you know, I've hesitated to state, but it solely rests on the shoulders of Cadillac Public School, the property owner, the timeframe of the request for proposals, not fixing a window that's broken out, not dealing with the graffiti, not policing the area. It solely rests on Cooley School. And yes, I believe it should be addressed that, you know, that was by design. And many times in school board meetings, several of the, at least two of the building committee meetings, members said, if we don't sell it, do what we want to do, we'll just tear it down. Well, I'm glad that it's not going to be torn down. I would hope that if the apartments do go in there, that there is a park go on the Marble Street side. It would be a nod to the community. And without public grants and funding, it's simply not viable to put apartments in those buildings too costly. So I guess a lot of things depend on winning a grant to fund the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not talking. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment and move to good of the order. Should anyone have anything this evening?
I guess I'd like to thank all the people that have called me over the past few weeks on the short-term rental issue. I know that that is extremely important to all our residents, but I think especially important to those who have purchased an R1 zoning expecting quiet use and enjoyment of their property without a hotel-like atmosphere next to it. As you guys have heard me say in public so many times, please, please stay involved. For those people that have stood up and talked and given feedback to council, it's wonderful. Please continue. Please get your friends to be involved. I believe our next meeting regarding that is June 13th.
Yes, there's a special forum.
And I think the more people that come and are involved in that, the better. Saying that, I feel fairly confident for those who have trepidation that it is not the desire, at least of me as a council member, to in any way change the nature of R1 zoning that would allow hotel-like atmosphere in neighborhoods that people intentionally bought not to have to deal with that. But it takes people's involvement and input. So I want to thank everybody who's done it and invite those who haven't to become involved.
And I would just add that we are going to have the forum out at the new city building out on 44 Road and.
I got the address.
Okay.
7241 East 44 Road.
Okay. And that being said, that there's more space out there, so please encourage people to come, whether they support or they don't support, just so that they can be heard.
I think we're all in on that. Thank you. I just wanted to mention, we will have a flyer that we'll be putting online and on our Facebook page and getting the word out, obviously, so that the news can do whatever publicizing is possible. It's for 5:30 a week from tomorrow, at 7241 East 44 Road. It is not an official public meeting. It is a public forum. It's just an opportunity to hear a little bit from staff about zoning updates. We'll certainly focus on some highlights, short-term rental being one, and then a good listening session for us to take feedback on what, you know, that's going to be all about before we then commence the official process, which will be going to the planning commission, having a public hearing with the planning commission, ultimately coming back to city council with a public hearing, then with city council, and there's a lot that could happen in between. So.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have something that, some news from the youth council on, let me go back to the date, on Friday, June, going back, June 16th, we will be showing our first movie in the park. It's going to be Toy Story. It will start at dusk, which by June 16th is 8:39 after nine o'clock. So come, dress for the weather, hope for good weather. We've had some bad luck last year with real soggy places, but judging how the weather's been lately, hopefully we won't, the rain won't hit right then. So Toy Story in the park, bring the family, bring grandma and grandpa chairs, blankets, put the kids in jammies and come on down for some great community fun. This one will be sponsored by DTE Energy. And then the next one will be sponsored by another group and then the next one.
Is it going to be monthly?
There will be three this summer, in June, July, and August. So I suppose monthly in this summer.
Yeah, I nailed it.
One in June, one in July, one in August.
There's three by the youth council, but there could be more movies.
Oh, yes. Yeah. I think there are more movies.
And I'd just like to add that we also have the concert series coming up.
True.
And I've heard that the chess club is going to be playing chess at the concerts.
Oh, that's good.
So if you want to listen to music and lose at chess.
And lose at chess.
It could be fun.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, well, we need to go into closed session tonight, so if someone would make that motion.
I make a motion to adjourn to closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement and invite Adam Ojepka, Director of Public Safety, to join.
Second, support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Session?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Following our closed session and review of the potential settlement agreement, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the settlement agreement for the command section of the police, the COAM, as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.